Does anyone have any to bring up today? Okay, we will go right into our work session about starting with the Willamette Falls Locks Authority.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald, members of City Council. I'm Mark Ottenhead, Public Affairs Director, and I will be doing a brief presentation tonight on an update status on the Willamette Falls Locks Authority. The Willamette locks is a key component of the Willamette River Basin and in terms of river transportation. The Willamette River is split into two segments by the Willamette Falls, which is actually one of the largest waterfalls in the United States. Private investors originally built the locks for boat traffic to bypass the falls in the late 1800s. And here's a map that shows a little bit more specifically about the locks location near Oregon City, just downstream from Wilsonville.
We might pause for just a second for a technical adjustment. We use electricity this time. Good, okay. All right, we'll proceed.
Okay, no problem. Just a brief bit of history because this is quite a historic structure. In 1847, Boone's Ferry opens as a primary farm-to-market route. That is the actual ferry here in Wilsonville that at the time was known as Boone's Landing. And at this time, Willamette Valley commodities are unloaded at the falls. They're transported manually around the falls and then reloaded below the falls on ships. So a very cumbersome operation that went on for many decades. During this time, riverboat traffic on the Willamette became a major source of transportation. Here is a picture from 1907 with the stern-wheeler MODOC at Boone's Landing, and you can see the railroad trestle in the back. The railroad trestle had just been built a few years before. It burned down a few years later and was rebuilt, but eventually railroads overtook steamboats. And Boone's Landing was one of many Willamette Valley landings in St. Paul and Newburgh, up and down the river where basically farmers would bring wheat, logs, aggregate, hay, all kinds of crops for shipment to Portland and actually world markets outside to San Francisco and other locations. However, eventually railroads would take over the role of steamships. In 1873, the Willamette Falls Locks was actually opened under private ownership. And a few decades later, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers was authorized by Congress to purchase the locks. And in 1921, the Army Corps of Engineers completed upgrades and expansion of the locks. When Congress authorizes a project like this, they provide for a special authorization purpose. In this case, it was commercial tonnage transport. However, over time, gradually, there was a decline in shipping of locks through the locks. And railroads took over, and then trucks became the primary shipping source. This is particularly true during the 1980s when the river was no longer being dredged because of endangered species issues, and so the commercial tonnage through the locks continued to decrease. In fact, the last, one of the last major companies to use the locks on a regular basis was Wilsonville's Wilsonville Concrete and Marine Industrial LLC, primarily shipping aggregate up and down the river. In fact, one barge could take an average of 35 to 60 full dump truck loads off of city streets, which was quite a savings at the time. In 2011, the Army Corps of Engineers suddenly closed the locks due to a life safety issue, and that was a failure of what's called a grungan iron, which is a type of device that opens the locks and closes the locks. Subsequently, the City Council adopted our TSP, and in that, the City Council specifically wanted to see that the Willamette River would be open for transportation purposes in the future. In 2014, the City Council adopted a resolution supporting the reopening of the Willamette Falls Locks. And in 2014, we joined an informal working group of local governments led by Clackamas County, looking to see if reopening the locks would be feasible. The Army Corps of Engineers proposed cementing the locks shut permanently. And then there would be never any opportunity to rejoin the upper and lower portions of the Willamette River. So this is what people got various parties very engaged. In 2014, the City Council adopted our tourism development strategy, which noted that the locks and the Willamette River could be a great asset for the city. In 2014, the City Council also agreed to fund a special project by Eco Northwest called the Willamette Falls Locks Economic Potential Report. And I did not include in your packet, but that was followed up some years later by another report on actual ways you could make money operating the locks. Nope, I went the wrong way there. Let's see here. And then our state legislative agenda, we added opening the locks to our state legislative agenda, which has been there ever since. In 2016, the City Council also adopted a resolution act as a concurring party on the Section 106 MOA, Memorandum of Agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers. And this is basically a process whereby the Army Corps has to indicate that there is nothing of historic significance, and if there is, that they will maintain that and record it for posterity's purposes. This is in relation to SHIPO, the State Historic Preservation Office. Starting in 2017, we testified for the legislature in support of Senate Bill 256 to establish the Willamette Falls Locks Commission. Subsequently, the Council nominated Counselor Starr to serve, and he was appointed by the commission. In 2019, the Council adopted a resolution with an IGA with Clackamas County to support the work of the Locks Commission. The county acted as the fiscal agent on behalf of all the entities that were working together to support reopening the locks. In 2019, Councilman Linville was appointed by the governor to serve on the commission. In 2020, Wilsonville Concrete Marine Industrial announced that they were relocating the marine operations from Wilsonville to the port of St. Helens because the locks had now been closed for eight, nine years, and they couldn't keep waiting for government to do something. And so they had to relocate their marine operations. However, their headquarters is still in Wilsonville, and they've also expanded aggregate operations to Salem. In 2021, we testified in support of additional bills, especially House Bill 2564, to create a new authority that would take over the locks and would accept ownership of the locks from the Army Corps of Engineers. During this whole time, the Army Corps of Engineers has been conducting a disposition study and an environmental assessment, and this is needed to de-authorize the locks and to dispose of them as no longer being a federal asset to be transferred to the state and to also do seismic retrofits and basically to repair the locks into operable condition. The disposition study also identifies special historical records that need to be transferred and public displays of these historical records. House Bill 2564 of 2021 then created the actual locks authority, which was recommended by the commission. And this is a special kind of public corporation that's similar to Oregon Health Science University, the State Accident Insurance Fund, known as SAFE, and the Oregon State Fair. Those are the three existing public corporations in Oregon. All three have been considered very successful. And what it does is a public corporation has some of the flexibility of a private corporation, but it has access to state resources such as human resources, insurance, auto fleet services, so a real opportunity to save money on the expense end. The mission of the authority as established by law is to establish the ownership, oversight, and management of the locks for the purpose of enhancing the economic vitality of Oregon through facility resiliency and navigability of the Willamette River. And also repairing, maintaining, and upgrading, operating the locks and the associated properties and facilities for commercial, transportation, recreational, cultural, historic heritage, and tourism purposes. So quite a wide-ranging mission for the locks to achieve. This is a little smaller print, but the Authority's Board of Directors may have seven to 11 members who are all appointed by the governor. Federally recognized Indian tribes, so the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ron are now a member, have been appointed. Regional or municipal governments, the city of West Lynn is on. The maritime industry, this would be such as Wilsonville Concrete or other boating-type businesses, the tourism industry. They want people with experience in finance, marketing, and economic development. And also adjacent property owners, in this case, the West Lynn Paper Company, whose name has been changed, and abutting energy facilities, and that means PGE, which has the oldest power generation plant in the United States. Funding to reopen and maintain the locks, so to date, almost $17 million of federal and state funds have been allocated for this. In 2021, a bit earlier, we had $3.3 million of state and federal appropriations. In 2022, Congressman Schrader and our senators obtained $6.2 million in federal earmarks for the Army Corps of Engineers to do the seismic upgrades and the disposition study. And then, just this past year, the legislature allocated $7.25 million to the authority to continue work on repairing the locks and to take over operations. In 2018, the costs were estimated at $15.5 billion. So it appears that the amount of money that has been allocated to date is enough to actually reopen the locks and to get them running again. There is a joint annual funding effort for the locks that has been led principally by Clackamas County and Metro at the $40,000 a year. And then on down, as various interests maybe go further away from the locks, the annual contribution has gone down. We should note that early on, when it was the working group, many of these local governments, particularly Metro and Clackamas County, hosted staff labor hours, which are not reflected in any of these financial numbers. Tourism and business interests had dedicated earlier over $100,000 during the work of the commission to study reopening the locks. What are the advantages to Wilsonville of an operable Willamette Falls locks? Well, there's several, river transportation being the main one. We have a clear channel all the way from the Pacific Ocean to Wilsonville. Absolutely amazing if you think about that. Also seismic resilience. The roadways, the bridges, particularly in I-5, but other bridges are anticipated to collapse during the Cascadia subduction event. And it may be that river travel is the only way to move heavy supplies through the region. Outdoor recreation, residents and visitors can boat great distances. They can go to Oregon City, Portland, even Estoria. And there's the cultural heritage, restoration of traditional river travel options, including for Native American tribes such as the Canoe Tribes. And Wilsonville is actually the second highest port of call on the Willamette. Only Newburgh is higher. The river is no longer dredged between Newburgh and Salem, and so commercial vessels can go no higher than Newburgh. So it's an opportunity, the Portland Spirit owners and some other cruise lines indicated an interest in a Willamette Valley wine country excursion, and where they would come up and spend the night in Wilsonville or Newburgh and enjoy our entertainment and other assets. That, in summary, is an update on the Willamette Falls Locks Authority, and I'm happy to answer any questions or provide other information. Thank you.
So you said that money's already been collected to open. We don't need to collect additional funds?
We're being asked to provide our annual contribution. I'll go back to that sky.
The $7,000?
Yeah. Originally, we were asked to provide it for a five- to seven-year period. And we provided money early on for the commission, and then they didn't bill us for two years. And now that the authority has been reestablished, but they forgot to get a W-9. You guys got to get a W-9 before I pay you. So anyway, so we have paid $7,000 this past fiscal year. We have budgeted $7,000 for this current fiscal year. And we may be asked again to support one more time as the authority gets up and running.
Thank you.
Any other?
I just would really have a couple of questions. The seismic, the argument on seismic, doesn't that conflict with the fact that the river hasn't been dredged beyond a certain point? So if there is, when there is a Cascadia earthquake, if the river hasn't dredged, you can't get the river traffic up for transportation to get the supplies, correct? Or would it come up through the Columbia?
It could still go to the Columbia presumably.
Okay.
But again, that's kind of theoretical. Who knows really what bridges will go down? But hopefully, the Abernathy will stay upright.
Another question, though. I understand the locks being open. Is there any greater plan? When I drive by that area, I look at it, and it looks like a horrific eyesore to the entire
Sure.
beauty of the Willamette. Is there any greater plan at some point? Or are those both of those to either remove those facilities? Or maybe they're still operational?
It depends. The former West Lynn Paper Company has now been reopened and is actually a recycled paper company operating there. And adjacent to them is the PGE Power Plant. Both of those are staying currently. On the other side of the river, on the Oregon City side, is the former mill, the Blue Heron Mill, which has now been decommissioned. And the Grand Ron have purchased that site and are in the process of demolishing it with the intention eventually of building some sort of tourist-type attraction. Other tribes are afraid they might want to put a casino there, but there's not a lot of parking availability, so there's some contention amongst the tribes. However, the Grand Ron do intend to remove the old mill facility and actually make a boardwalk that extends out towards the falls for the public to view.
So is the Grand Ron deconstruction or demolishing of that facility funded by anyone other than the tribe?
Not that I am aware. I'd have to research that. I'm not really clear. I know that Metro had some funds engaged early in the study efforts, particularly for the public walkway component, but I believe the Grand Ron are doing it on their own at this point.
Is the PGE facility currently operational?
Yes, it is.
It is. Will that change their relationship with the river or the falls at all if the locks are reopened?
No, no.
There we go. So the original, thank you for this very inclusive history here. You mentioned that originally that there were some concerns about environmental impact for protected species. Is that still in play, or have things changed over time with that as well?
Well, that reference was to dredging the Willamette River. And because of the salmon, when the salmon were listed as endangered species, that's pretty much when the Army Corps stopped the dredging of the Willamette. They still actually dredge the parts of the Columbia and the Colombian Willamette. In fact, Wilsonville Concrete Marine, they had the majority of their tugboats down at the confluence of the Willamette and Columbia when the locks were closed because they were doing dredging operations for the Corps. So apparently, the Columbia, I guess the fish don't live along the bottom of the Columbia, maybe? But they might live along the bottom of the Willamette because it's shallower. I'll have to, but I'm not really sure. But apparently, the endangered species issues are no longer of concern in terms of the river dredging. Now they're focused on the dams on the Willamette River Basin and how the dams block the salmon from reaching habitat.
And that piece with the dams, then, it's not really in relation to the locks?
Correct.
I have another question, too. If the locks are open and we're talking potential commercial traffic, does that impact the water treatment plan at all? Because I know that it does the clearing of the water on a regular basis. Is there any potential impact?
I have not heard of anything at this time that's never been brought up as an issue.
Given the, from what I understand, given the size, the width of the locks, they do not lend themselves to commercial vehicles at this time. There were specially made, I don't know what you call them. I guess they're barges.
Barges.
Barges that were specifically able to go through the locks. So the commercial traffic that would go through there would be mostly probably recreationally oriented. So like a spirit of the Portland boat might be able to go through recreational vehicles like kayaks, individual boats, those kinds of things. So that's really been where most of the discussion has been.
What about the
They're not looking really, the percentage decrease in commercial transportation prior to the closure of the locks really gave an indication that that would not be the primary reason for reopening.
Does the no-wake zones impact some of the recreational? Or, well, not necessarily recreational, but some of the leisure and the Portland spirit and commercial traffic like that?
The no-wake zone applies to portions of the Willamette with those special boats that create the large wakes. I've not heard of any comments, per se, in relation to the locks and wakeboarding.
I didn't understand either that there would be prohibition of any specific vehicles that were able to, if they were able to navigate the locks, that they could use them.
Right.
Where does the no-wake zone start? Does it start at Lake O?
You know, it's changed this past year. The marine board, again, tinkered with the locations and the speeds. I'd have to get you new
It's multiple locations.
On where that is, because part of it, there's different places where there's no wake out here, like under the Boone Bridge, for example. But I know there's some different sections where there's wake zones or no-wake zones.
Got it, okay.
Are you, is your question, Counselor Dunwell, around if opening that up would invite more of that kind of speedboat activity?
That's exactly, that's exactly where I'm going with my question because it's one of those things, there may be a no-wake zone, but enforcement of it is another matter. So, and I know that if you start bringing things like the Portland Spirit and some of those other commercial vehicles in, where is the enforcement of the no-wake zone?
Well, my understanding is that that boat is not the problem. It's boats that have specific weight that creates the wake. And I think that they have enforced that over time. I think we can research that, but I think it is enforceable. It's where it is, where they come into, where there is a no-wake It's where it is, where they come into, where there is a no-wake zone. Where there is free from any restriction, how to bring that in. Now, I had the opportunity in about 2002, I think, when Paddle Oregon started, I think I mentioned this before, to go with a bunch of canoes and kayaks through the locks, which was really cool. And you're in this, you see these big walls of telephone pole-like facilities. What I, and, you know, so all those years, people were going up and down it in small vehicles, small.
Craft.
Craft, thank you. And I wanted to know, back to the commercial activity, if we could just talk a little bit more about that. Do I understand that Wilsonville Concrete would be able to resume activities?
They would, however, they've actually relocated.
Oh, so they're not planning on?
No.
Okay. And when we talked about this in 2012, or '14, back then, I think that the main interest that was discussed was the tourism, travel up and down, and being able to include Wilsonville and West Lynn. Can you talk a little bit about West Lynn's waterfront plans? I know you're not representing West Lynn, but I know that, aren't they pretty excited about this?
They are. And they've actually, they have dedicated their former city hall building, which then became the police building, to the new Willamette Falls and Landings National Heritage Area Coalition, of which we are a member. And that is going to become like a museum focused on the river. And that building is located immediately adjacent to the parking lot for the locks. And part of the deal with the disposition study is that the Army Corps is actually creating new public displays at the locks. And the coalition is working with the Army Corps to basically figure out how they're going to do parking and basically take people and tourists of the locks in that area. So, did I answer your question exactly? I mean, so apparently, that's what they're aiming to do is.
And I think it's, I've understood part of the amenities at the waterfront.
Yes, to improve access to the water and amenities. But they have a very tricky situation because their wastewater treatment plant is located on a bluff right above the river. Willamette Drive is a narrow drive that runs parallel to 205 above the river. So, they have actually sort of limited options on how to improve their waterfront. I think Oregon City is more excited about their options at improving access to the waterfront. Of course, they have 99E, which runs right along the waterfront, so they're having to deal with that issue also. But both cities are looking for waterfront development opportunities.
Well, our question is, you know, staff recommendation is to continue to support work on this Willamette Falls Authority based on all these things that have been included here and questions that we've asked. And I know we're not voting on it tonight, but I am interested in continuing this. I think we've put a lot into it and I would like to continue to work on this. I think there's a lot of potential that could develop in that area. It's going to take time.
I do have one more question.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Carolyn. What is the benefit to Wilsonville? Is there a landing where individuals can either enter or exit?
Perfect question. The Boones Ferry Park Master Plan that the Council adopted, was it two years ago or three? Basically calls for creating a non-motorized water access to the Willamette River at the location of the former Boones Ferry. On the opposite side of the river, we have the Clackamas County Boones Ferry Marina, which is already operating. So, they tend to take more motorized craft. And then, on the other side of the river, we'll be having the non-motorized. And that's all part of a non-wake five-mile-per-hour zone.
Yeah, I think the other advantage, too, is that there is a marina at Charbonneau, and there are also Wilsonville homes that are on the river that have water access through docks. And we have heard some of those citizens who would love to be able to get to downtown Portland in their boat and just to spend the day or whatever. So, I think it's a really good plan as well. And I think in the memorandum of understanding that is being developed between the federal government and through the Army Corps of Engineers to the Willamette Falls, the Willamette Falls Locks Authority speaks to a commitment by the Corps of Engineers to not only do a couple of displays, but to collect historical photographs and a number of other things that would be put into the museum or interpretive center or whatever. So, I think they're trying to look at it from a historical perspective. So, they may be coming actually to our Historical Society to ask for some photographs that they might be able to use.
My turn. So, will you just summarize again, please, the timeline? It sounds like there's two phases. So, like when, what's the best-case scenario for opening up the locks? And what's kind of the process?
So, the Army Corps of Engineers is letting contracts out right now. There's like several contracts that they have to have and different repairs done. So, there's repairs and then seismic retrofitting. So, they're in the process of letting those contracts out. We anticipate this will be about a two-year process. Like many construction-related activities, there's been slowness because of labor and supply issues. But the Army Corps is chasing this. I'm anticipating two years until they're actually completed. It is the federal government, so it could go slower or faster. But I'm thinking about two years. So, realistically, the locks could be open. And then, I would estimate a two-to-three-year period, assuming everything goes well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Did you get what you needed?
I did. Thank you very much.
I think we're good, then. Thank you for that report. So, that brings us to the Sophia Playground Replacement Project with Mr. Schull.
Can I be up here again? I'm just not a stick for last name. Just for you all. Mayor Fitzgerald and members of council, my name is Dustin Schull, and I am the park supervisor. And it's my privilege to be here before you tonight to talk about the Sophia Playground Replacement Project. One of the first questions that probably comes up is, why Sophia? And how can it possibly already be timed to replace this playground? It was one of the early playground installations in Villebois. It is 13 years old now, and it's really getting towards the end of its useful life. Sophia Park hosts just a litany of community events. It's currently home to the farmer's market on Thursdays, but there's also Fourth of July celebrations, Halloween celebrations. That shelter there, I think, has a drop-in reservation. Every single weekend, somebody is there using that playground as the central focus. And Sophia Park really has become a central park in the Villebois community, even as we continue to build out parks from there. And there's really no inclusive play elements currently at the playground, which is something we've been trying to work on as we work through our system, looking at it through a new lens. That 13 years of age does make it challenging to source parts, which has led to increased maintenance and repair time and also some closures. Some of the favorite features out there get closed regularly because it's just hard for us to source the bearings and the things that keep them moving. So, we've had some increase in maintenance and repair. So, when it was time to go through this process and start looking at what the community would like as a replacement, we really wanted to make sure that we were reaching the community and getting their input. So, we really came up with a unique survey, and credit to our communications team for the help with this. It was really like a choose-your-own type of adventure book type of a survey where typically in a playground survey, we come up and say, you know, do you like playground A or playground B or playground C? This time, we said, do you like two-to-five structure, one, two, or three? Five-to-12 structure, one, two, or three? Or, you know, inclusive spinner, one, two, or three? And that really allowed us to take all of those components and merge them together into the overall look that the community is looking for. Inclusive options were included, and there was even a color selection piece, which was a pretty popular option as well. Overall, we had 154 responses. I think 123 of those were Villebois residents. And of those 154, 80% of them indicated that they had children within the home. So, it was really a great response for us, and it really felt like we were reaching the playground user group at its core, which is really great. We had 43 individual comments. Some of them are here. A few of our favorites, we pulled out. The slides and spinners have lines, 20 kids on the spinner, huge weight for the slide. Take into account the volume and get the maximum number of kids to play safely. And then, this is my favorite. This is really bringing our team policy, our local feel, to the community. I can't think of anybody better to take a playground survey than a five-and-a-half-year-old child. And this parent really, and bark chips are adequately filled. And one issue that we struggle with at Sophia is keeping those chips in place because it is so used and so loved. So, there were really clear preferences and choices from the community. And so, we were able to move forward with those. And we'll get to the overall design here in just a second. But this new playground, it really is community-selected. The two-to-five structure, the five-to-12 structure, and the spinner were all the winning components by a pretty decent amount. And even the color was the community favorite. There's a lot of collaborative and imaginative play in the playground, a lot of opportunities for kids to come play, but also to come play together. There's inclusive surfacing. We're going to, we have the opportunity to put turf in, which is a great maintenance savings for our team overall. It'll save us a ton of time. But it really does make those inclusive components accessible. We see a lot of inclusive components go into playgrounds that maybe you can't get to if you're in a mobility device. And it does create that barrier, even though by definition, wood chips are ADA-accessible. They don't really meet the goal of that accessibility. We really maximize the play space. We went vertical even more so than what's there now. And it's state contract pricing, so we feel like we're getting the best product available for the best price point available. And this is, one of my favorite comparisons is the spinner on the bottom left there is the current spinner. As you can see, it's probably not the easiest to get somebody from a mobility device into or out of. Little kids struggle with it because you kind of have to either sit on it or like wrap your body around it. But it is much-loved, and we even saw that in the comments. The spinner that we're replacing it with is the Volta Inclusive Spinner, which is there on the right in the concept. It seats somewhere between nine and 12 kids, nine comfortably, 12 in a pile, you know, kids play. And it does have that ability to transfer from a wheelchair and really serve more of our community in a more meaningful way. So, what's next with this playground? So, there you see the kind of finalized concept. And so, this will be on consent agenda for your consideration on August 21st. Following that, we would look to get the contract signed and get the equipment ordered in September. We're still seeing a six-to-10-week delay on getting parts in, so we'd expect delivery of equipment in December. And then, our parks team will go ahead and take care of demolition and site prep, just in an effort to be cost-effective in this process. So, we'll take those pieces that we can manage easily in-house. We'll install that new equipment in February with our contractor, and then we'd really love to get it open in March or April, really taking advantage of that kind of rainy weather window. A lot of other people don't like to do playground construction in that window. We're very fortunate to have Buell Burke on this one, who, that's a sweet spot for us. They're slow, we can get in, and we won't really affect the community on a large scale, right? If we shut that playground down in the summer, it's going to hurt some kids. So, we really want to take advantage of the winter timeline. And I think my overall favorite thing about this playground, as we move on to the last slide here, is it's really built, the volume of kids that Buell Burke anticipates it being able to handle at a capacity point is 93 kids. It's in a small footprint like Sophia's playground right now. Getting close to 100 kids utilizing that playground is really, it's really a feat, given the kind of odd football-shaped play structure design. And so, we're really excited to bring this one to you for consideration, and I'm here for any questions if you have them.
I have a question. Is the water play area going to be taken out?
No, the water will stay. Those were, there were feedback comments on, we need more water, and can the water stay? And the water can stay. That's actually one of the ones that, it's a pass-through system, so we don't have to treat any of it. It's just good, fresh Willamette River water. And so, we were able to turn that on when we had that warm weather in May, just to give the community access to something when we were unable to get the bigger water features up.
Oh, great.
So, it's kind of, it's a good niche piece for us in the early season.
And I see in the distance here, you can see those spinners, those vertical.
Yeah.
Those are, it looks like you're keeping a version of what you have there, which is really popular.
And those were brought back into the design. That's a piece of why we took demolition on ourselves, is to get the most amenities in at the price point that we have. And those are two of the features in Sophia that are often in need of replacement, and Compania's a German company. So, getting parts, bearings essentially from Germany takes more time than Burke is a Wisconsin-based company, and they have inventory here in Portland. And so, we feel really good about keeping those same components that are beloved in that park and just elevating their ability to stand the test of time.
Thanks. I have a comment. I'm really pleased that you're putting turf in place. Does that require more maintenance as opposed to the chips?
So, it's different maintenance. Chips require, you know, weekly, our team goes out and they rake chips back into place. So, wood chips are fall-test rated when they're all there. All it takes is one kid to come through on a slide or a fire pole to move them. There is really no routine weekly maintenance with turf. We're unitary surfacing, turf poured in place, and tiles. Sees a little more maintenance in the long term, right? Years 15 to 20, if the playgrounds make it through that long. Is it like the exit of those slide zones where there's a lot of use over and over? And what we'll do there is, as those fail, we'll get creative with shapes and colors in those use zones to remove that impacted area, put in a blue star or a yellow triangle to make it fun, but it's a repair, right? Instead of having light green and dark green, well, so there's, they're just different maintenance, but certainly less routine maintenance, which will free our team up to take care of.
Yeah, well, just a point of my own experience with the HOA-controlled parks, for instance in Villebois, the wood chips are not maintained by them. And you can actually see the bolts, and they do become dangerous. So, just moving to the turf seems to be a great safety move.
Yeah, there's an increased expense upfront with the turf, but long-term and from a safety perspective, it certainly outperforms wood chips. It's not even close.
One question about the materials and the ability to clean. Or recently, we had an instance, right, where, and it rarely happens, but it does happen, where graffiti or something like that needs to be cleaned up on our parks. How do these materials perform in that regard?
So, Burke primarily has roto-molded plastic and metal components. So, anything that we have graffiti-wise, unless it is burned on something on plastic, we can handle it. We have, this is the same company that did River Fox recently and the park at Mary's Field, and we've seen kind of our typical Sharpie light pen vandalism at those as well at times. And it really is not a concern from a kind of graffiti management standpoint.
Great, and that includes the turf as well? If there's something that happens on the turf?
And the turf, you know, the turf will be a new product here for us at Sophia. It kind of is in line with the poured-in-place, which we've had great results with at Engelman. And that, we haven't seen any vandalism there as well. So, it's just a little different. It's just all unitary. It's athletic field turf off of a football field that they put a pad underneath for fall protection.
Great, great. And the materials as far as heat, too? How does it do with that? It's great to hear that that water piece will still be in play because I think that helps when it's a warm day and stuff. But just thinking about the surfaces that we're making available for kids to play on and how that reflects heat or absorbs heat.
Right, and yeah, so the playground itself, you'll see the light gray in color, right? That's a very conscious choice with that design element to make sure those elements don't get hot. don't get hot. Turf, when it's 110, it's going to get warm. But what we've seen is, we generally don't see a lot of people outside utilizing those spaces. It's not a football field where there has to be a soccer, has to be a football game. And the other really good thing about the turf here is, on like a trial basis with that heat, is because it's a smaller section, we'll be able to go out and do some testing internally. And we can always go get water from an irrigation quick connect and cool it down. That's how you cool down turf on an athletic field, irrigate it. If we were in that spot where, hey, it's 4th of July weekend, and we know there's a big community event coming on Saturday, and the playground has to be open and accessible, and we're worried about safety, we do have steps to, water accessible.
Oh, that's interesting. Where like, wood chips, I don't know if you'd have that same, it would just absorb and run through?
Yeah, and they probably don't, they're just not as reflective. We've never had that. Heat and turf is a known issue, specifically in athletics. And also, this doesn't have the rubber pelletized infill.
Okay.
Like a sports turf, so it's not as reflective and as hot because it doesn't have that black material, so.
Okay, good. Thank you for that info.
Thank you for the report, and anything else?
Excellent.
All right. We're moving through, and thank you for that report. Now we'll go to our Development Code Process clarifications with Ms. Rybold.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and counselors. Let me get my slides pulled up here real quick. All right. So this presentation before you tonight are for some kind of housekeeping Development Code Process clarifications. I am Kim Rybold, Senior Planner, and I'm leading this work along with some assistance from one of our consultants who works on some of our wireless applications, Jamie Crawford with Winterbrook Planning, and she is joining us remotely tonight if there are any questions. So diving right in, the project overview, the main goals here, these are changes that are procedural in nature to our development code. We're not looking to really change any policies that we've adopted. It's just some cleanup. We do have a couple of review processes that we will be updating, as well as just adding some more clarity around some of our application requirements and correcting some inconsistencies that we've noted along the way in the code. The primary changes that are part of these modifications relate to wireless communication facility applications. The challenges we face here is that there's a certain application type called a 6409A application. And essentially what these applications are, are for modifications to existing wireless facilities, meeting certain guidelines that are, have been established by the federal government. And essentially, the federal government in establishing these guidelines has pretty much told localities that if you have a modification that fits within these parameters, you have to approve it at the local jurisdiction. Not only do you have to approve it, we're giving you 60 days and much to do that. And so, right now, these applications are processed via our Class II review, which does have a public notice period and is subject to the typical 120-day lane use review timeline. So the issue here is that, you know, the timing does not line up well with what is the mandated review period. And as well, there isn't really a lot of flexibility that we have in terms of decision-making. It's a very ministerial decision, and so the public notice piece of it, if we get public comment, we really can't do anything about it. So it functions in terms of our decisions a little more like our Class I's. Likewise, the current wireless code, which we included some proposed markup in your packet, the requirements are written to cover a whole host of wireless communication facility types, but a lot of the application requirements aren't applicable for facilities like these co-located 6409A applications. And so essentially, a lot of times we have companies that want to... Oh, yes. Does she have an addition? Oh, okay, great, sorry. And so, we have this list of requirements, but some of these smaller antenna changeouts or small wireless facilities that are, there is type of facility that can be located on a light pole, a lot of the application requirements just don't even apply. So it becomes very confusing for applicants to navigate what they actually need to submit to us. So our proposal here is to convert these 6409A co-location review applications to a Class I, to really reflect the review timing and decision-making capacity that we have. We have some edits that clarify permitted versus conditional uses, as it's currently written in the code. And then just a reorganization of application requirements, so it's not necessarily changing anything that's in the code. So if you had a new tower, for instance, that wanted to come in, all of the application requirements that currently apply would still apply, but we're just rewriting it in a way so that it's a little easier to understand. And then we just have a couple of other housekeeping edits to go along with this, where we've noticed some inconsistencies in parts of our code. So the first of these deals with development approval extensions. We have references in two different code sections to how we go about reviewing and processing these. They each have conflicting information in terms of timelines and review process. So we are seeking to clean that up so that it's clear which administrative review process applies. It also will remove some references to things happening in 2009 and 2010. So we're just getting rid of that old language because it doesn't apply anymore. We are clarifying some language around temporary uses and signs so that we have consistent criteria that apply no matter what your timeframe is. So certain short-duration temporary uses are a Class I. If you are 31 to 120 days, you fall into a Class II. These should all have the same criteria, but the way the code is written, they don't. And so we're just looking to clean that up and make it consistent. And also clarify that if you have a temporary sign, that those are allowed, but you still need to apply for a permit because that is also not clear in the code. And then lastly, in terms of development applications submitted, we do have language that talks about when the review timeline starts, and that is upon receipt of an application form as well as full payment. What it doesn't explicitly state is that we also need the signature of an authorized party. So usually, this would be the property owner, somebody authorized to sign on their behalf. It's sort of a roundabout way in the code that you know that that's an application requirement, but we want to explicitly state it because we have an issue in some of our development applications where this lack of clarity, we get pushback from applicants, and we're just trying to make things clear. So we're not changing anything, just clarifying. So they, we reviewed these changes with the Planning Commission at a work session in July. They didn't have any additional comments. We do have a couple of outstanding refinements that we're looking at in the code, just to make sure everything is going to function as we intend it. And our plan is to bring these updates forward for a public hearing in September. So with that, I just want to take a moment to offer you an opportunity to ask any questions, share any comments that you might have about these proposed amendments. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Go ahead.
When you talk about the public hearing, so you're talking about a public hearing before the Planning Commission and then another public hearing with the council?
That is correct, because it's, any Development Code amendments go through an ordinance process.
Okay. And my understanding from the document is that it would be open then to public comment at that, at those public hearings.
Correct.
And so if people had questions about why this is in there, or why not, you know, why are we doing this, then we would be able to address those, even though we wouldn't necessarily be able to change them?
So we, you know, as we do with all public hearings, we have the public comment period. We do have a notice that gets sent out. We do plan on notifying as a list of interested parties, property owners and recent wireless applicants, just because they have been through the process. And we see a lot of repeat applications on the same sites. In terms of, you know, the other notifications, people will be able to submit written comments as well. We're not looking, you know, depending on the type of comment, if it's a clarification comment, that is certainly something we can incorporate. I think we aren't seeking to have a larger policy change discussion as part of this amendment process. So it could be that there are ideas that are put out there that you all might want to consider at a future time if it does feel like more of a policy change, but we're just trying to keep it procedural right now.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other, oh, Counselor, President Ofrabon.
Thank you. One question that's not specifically about, but related. Okay. What are we seeing these days for the wireless facility? Has there been an uptick or applications? What does that look like these days?
So we, over the past couple of years, we've had a steady amount. I think we've had six applications come in thus far. Not all of them end up being complete.
Okay.
And so this is where some of the challenge lies. You know, sometimes they just submit a ton of information, and it's, you know, we do rely on some outside consultant assistance to assess the technical materials. So I would say that maybe half or so have actually been able to be deemed complete within the legal timeframe that we have. So I think we probably approved maybe three or four. It's usually things like swapping out antennas and ground equipment in existing facilities.
Okay, I was just curious what that was looking like, but thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. So that brings us to the next one, which is Housing Our Future.
All right, let me pull the slideshow up. Again, Kimberly Rybold, Senior Planner here. Also here in the room is Daniel Polly, Planning Manager. And we are both working on the Housing Our Future project, and we're really excited to give you your first presentation, of which we anticipate there will be many forthcoming over the next couple, next probably year and a half or so. The Housing Our Future project seeks to build on our recent housing planning work, including both Town Center and Frog Pond master planning efforts, the city's Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, and middle housing implementation, to assess what actions Wilsonville needs to take over the next 20 years to ensure that we are continuing to provide housing opportunities for the community. This project will seek to provide answers to several of these questions that you see here on this slide, and in doing so, will provide Wilsonville with a roadmap for future housing-related planning activities. I'll note that this project is required for continued compliance with statewide planning goal 10, which is the housing planning goal. And so in doing this work, we will be satisfying that requirement. The project includes two primary work components as required by the state statute. The first is the Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis, or the HNC-A. This is a technical document that assesses the city's available land inventory for future housing, examines forecasted growth in housing, and helps us to determine if there is sufficient land area to accommodate these needs over the next 20 years. The city's last assessment of this nature was completed in 2014. An adoption of this document is as a sub-element of the city's comprehensive plan, and may also result in some updated comprehensive plan policies related to housing. The second work product is the Housing Production Strategy, or the HPS. This is a document that establishes a set of strategies that build on the HNC-A to address unmet housing needs that the city has. This sounds a little kind of familiar. We did adopt an Equitable Housing Strategic Plan back in 2020 that is a similar type of document. And so, you know, we're hoping that that document really serves as a starting point for this work. And it allows us to check in on the progress that we've been making in implementing that plan and ensuring that we are continuing to take proactive steps to support housing production that meets the needs for our broad population. So we've been working with Echo Northwest, an economic and housing consulting firm, on this project, and it's currently split into three different phases that align with the state's Department of Land Conservation and Development. They have grant funding cycles, and we are hoping to maximize our ability to use grant funds for this project to the best of our ability. Right now, we are in the second phase of this work, which is primarily consisting of some city-funded outreach events that will help inform the project. We anticipate that the bulk of the work really is going to be happening in Phase 3, and this is going to begin depending on DLCD's next grant funding cycle, which is already kind of underway. We're doing some work to apply for that right now. And then the first phase occurred in the early part of this year, from February through June, and that was funded under a prior DLCD grant. And that really got to a lot of the initial technical work for the project, as well as development of a public outreach plan for the project. And that plan that we've developed is included as an attachment to your staff report. As we were pulling this together, we met with the city's DEI Committee this spring to help inform that outreach plan. And we also shared some of the initial HNC-A findings, as well as this outreach plan with the Planning Commission back in June. So while there is still some work to be done, we only have a partial draft HNC-A right now, I do want to take the next couple of slides to highlight some initial findings from this work that I think you might find interesting or informative. The first topic relates to cost burden. I feel like cost burden has been something that has come up a lot more in the news lately. And essentially, what cost burden is, is a ratio of somebody's gross income and how much of that they're spending on housing costs. So whether or not you're an owner or a renter, you have the potential, depending on what you're spending on that housing, to be cost-burdened. And if you're spending more than 50% of your gross income on housing costs, so this isn't just like, just your rent, you know, these are things that are related to rent, taxes, HOA fees, utilities, you know, things that are costs for you to live. If you're spending more than 50% on that, you're considered to be severely cost-burdened. And so the most recent census data is shown here on this slide, and it indicates that 37% of all Wilsonville households are currently cost-burdened. And over half of the city's renters are considered to be cost-burdened. I just want to point out that as a point of reference, a lot of this data is similar to the market study that we did for the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan project. And so I polled a couple of points of comparison, just so we can see what has been changing in four years. It's only been four years. But in 2019, when we did this work, only 23% of households in the city were cost-burdened. And looking at the comparison of the owner versus renter breakdown, what I found was the most of that increase was within renter households. So that is just kind of one key data point that will drive this work as we move forward. This is a graphic, a similar graphic appeared in the market study for the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, but this one is just updated to reflect where we are right now. And it illustrates across different income categories of where people fall, what you have to earn, or based on what you earn, what in theory you should be able to afford in a means that doesn't make you cost-burdened. So spending, and there's some assumptions baked into this, you know, depending on average assumptions about your income relative to what you're spending on housing, and assumptions about if you're an owner, what type of down payment you have. There's some very generalized assumptions here. But you can see, as you move from, you know, what's considered very low income up to 120% MFI, which is kind of, anything above that is considered to be high income, and everything in the middle is kind of middle income. You can see where those home prices and those monthly rents line up on this slide. The median home sale price that was captured from February of this year is $625,000. The sales price, that was the median home sale price when we did similar work in 2019, I suspect that some of that changes, that a lot of our for-sale product in that past four years, as we built out Frog Pond, a lot of that is a newer product that is commanding a higher price point. And then, you know, some of it is just larger changes in the housing market as well. So that's one... So that's one data point. Also, the next data point being what the average monthly rent is. And now the consultants, when they pulled this together, they included that utility cost as part of that. I think that added on a couple hundred dollars, but that's just over $2,000 a month. And that's averaging out across unit sizes. And so bigger units are going to cost a little more, smaller units are going to cost a little less. And that data point, it was data from 2018, that was in the market study, was approximately 1,300 at that point, without utilities. So add a couple hundred to that potentially as a point of comparison. And so you can see here, to be able to sort of safely and sustainably afford that, it requires an income level of approximately $82,000 a year. This slide here just illustrates the distribution of income levels that we have within the city, based on the most recent census data. So you can see, in Wilsonville, we're actually fairly evenly distributed across income categories. And so in my view, this illustrates the need for the city to continue planning for a variety of housing types and price points, because we have a lot of needs at a lot of different levels across our households. And so this information on these past few slides here illustrates some of the types of demographic analysis that are going to feed into that HNC-A document. And once we get back into that Phase Three work and it's further refined, our project team will be sharing that with you to provide you an opportunity to see everything more holistically and give us an opportunity to answer questions you might have on the data and provide more input as we move forward.
So I have a question on this slide.
Yes.
Do, when we get more detail from the consultants, will they be able to show us where, we have a higher-than-average number compared to other cities, I believe, or we usually have, of people living in retirement centers, such as Brookfield and so forth, assisted living? And I would like to see if they could show us how that affects the income levels, you know, if you can have a chart, you know, if that is worth breaking out.
I'm not a housing expert, but I think that would be a little problematic, because those facilities include things like meals and specialized medical care, so it's not truly housing-related.
Well, guess what I'm looking at is, let me ask another question another way. So when you're looking at people living in Wilsonville and their income levels, aren't they counted?
They would be. I don't know that the census data will be able to track that at that fine-grained of a level. I will bring that question forward to the consultant team.
I'm just curious how that factors in.
That's a good question.
It is.
I don't know.
I think it's gonna, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different types of facilities, and I know a lot of it depends on what services are being offered in terms of what the cost of that facility is. As you mentioned, there are options that have food or medical care.
What I'm really, you know, maybe you couldn't get at that.
Yeah.
What I'm getting at is, of all of the incomes, just straight incomes reported in Wilsonville, there is a way to talk about the number of those individuals who are living in assisted living.
I will ask that question, and we'll report back. There might be some, it might not, it might not be that we can answer that exact question, but there might be some other data.
We've always heard that Wilsonville has a higher-than, I don't know if average is the right word, but unusually high. You're the statistics person, but I'm just curious how that factors in or not.
I would believe so, because you either fall based on tenure into ownership or renters. And so I think these are all good questions to try to understand about age, and if that is having an effect here, and I can certainly.
20% of extremely low income. Even looking at income by age bracket would be interesting.
Okay.
You know, I know we might not be able to get like, address for, you know, that kind of granule and find out, you know, where people are living, but even if we had the income by age bracket.
We have census data on income across all demographics.
Yeah. So, but you know, if we could split, like, if we had a stacked bar for this, and then we could see by age bracket where people fall in these different income bars, that might be helpful and kind of get at, get at some of those questions.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I will ask, yeah, there's probably a number of different factors, and, you know, I will defer to our consultant team, because they live in this data a ton, and they will probably think of like, five different things to be able to offer you. And so knowing that that's a point of interest, or that that's piqued your interest.
I think that's an excellent question, because it could significantly skew the data, given the fact that a retiree who is living in an assisted living, or even living in a retirement area, may have extremely low income, but they may not necessarily have the need for a lot of income.
Right.
And I assume that the Coffee Creek residents are not included in this.
I don't believe so, but I will, okay. Thank you, Brian.
They're included in population for state shared revenue, but they're not included as, for Housing Needs Analysis.
They didn't complete the census.
Complete what census?
That drove some of this data.
This is all housing needs. This is the people that are renting or own homes in Wilsonville.
Right. So these are, there's a bunch of different census tables, and some, without going too much into the weeds, because it's a little outside of my firm area of expertise, but there's some data that you get from the census that is directly from that every 10-year questionnaire that you get sent and you respond to. The census also does these other surveys, and so a lot of this more fine-grained, you know, detail where you have these tables actually comes from this thing called the American Community Survey, which is not a census of everybody. It's a survey among people, and then the census uses that to extrapolate data trends.
So adults in custody are not required or not asked to complete the census, correct?
I, it sounds like based on.
It wouldn't be counted for housing needs.
Right. It wouldn't be, I don't think that's a household. We can get that clarification.
That's equivalent.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Well, I don't want to try to be, pretend to be a census expert here, so, but I think at the end of the presentation, if other questions come up that you want me to relay to our team, we probably won't start digging into some of that until that third phase of the project, but I think it's good to be aware of them now. Or even if you think of it later on down the road and want to send us an email, like, do that too, because I think, you know, sometimes we can answer them, sometimes, you know, the consultant team, you know, they're great, they do this type of work all throughout the state, and so they're super familiar with what the requirements are for this work. With that being said, we have the expertise here at the local level to know what questions to ask and what kind of, what kind of stories we need to pull out. And so that's also a very important part of putting together a document like this. So.
I hear another question.
I'm just asking if anybody has more.
Okay.
I mean, I think it brings up, it brings up an interesting question. There is one thing to look at data and look at the numbers. And there is another thing to make an interpretation of what that data means. And I think where this is missing for me is the analysis part of it that says, based on these data points, this is what is happening in Wilsonville. And maybe you're going to get to that, you know, at some point, or the consultants will. But I think the data points are interesting, but until we have an analysis that says, here's what's going on in Wilsonville, based on all of these data that we have collected or have available, this is what the issues are, one, two, three, and four. So hopefully, for me, I'm hoping that that can be done, so that it isn't just page after page after page of data points. And we are trying to make our own assessment of what it means. Because I think we all will see something a little bit different in here, you know, one about, oh, we have a lot of people in this category, or we have a lot of renters who are severely, you know, housing burdened, cost burdened, and/or whatever. And it's probably not helpful for us to make those individual interpretations, and far better for them to be analyzed and some conclusions drawn on that. That's my hope.
This is a really great segue to my next slide, so thank you for that.
I do have one more question for you on those projections. Was the fact that this pocket or the metro area of Oregon considered a climate oasis, is that included in the calculations for the growth?
Oh, the growth projections. This is a topic of conversation that comes up every time we do this type of work. The short answer is that, to some degree, this is why contextualization and outreach and additional conversations are going to be really important in this project, because singular points of data do not tell the whole story. In some ways, the process is a little prescriptive, and it is going to be evolving with some state legislation that has recently passed, but we're still, we're still kind of working a little bit in the older model. And a lot of what we rely on are forecasts from Metro in terms of population growth. Our observation has been that over time, these estimates have been low. It was acknowledged in the prior 2014 analysis. We acknowledged it, because there was this sort of not full-blown housing needs analysis that was done with the 2019 market study, but there was some work done at the county level that we pulled from. And so this has been an ongoing comment that we've had, but the way that the process is set up does require our work to use that Metro forecast number as one means of projecting growth. Our observations have been that every time we've had this growth forecast, we've exceeded it. This came up at the Planning Commission meeting, and one of the observations that our consultant offered was that this does happen a lot in growing communities. And eventually, as you grow, that percentage growth, as you get, your baseline gets larger, that number will kind of eventually stop growing as fast. So we might not see that over-performance relative to the forecasting that we have been seeing, but that Metro data does serve as the baseline. And so I say that we have to use that number, and we've, at every opportunity we have, we do try to provide input. When Metro does that forecasting, we provide that input all the time. So that being said, there's that number, and then there's kind of what we know and what we've observed, and I would encourage us to keep those things in our mind as we continue this work, because that will be really important as we start getting to those later decision points, when we're looking at strategies and we're, you know, making choices about what type of planning, planning activities do we need to do to support future housing need? And do we think that the need that the number, the numbers show us is correct, or should we be thinking beyond that? I think those are all really important things. So, great question. So briefly, we can, I think, I just want to cover a couple more items about how we're going to be approaching engagement, and then if there's other questions about everything, we can get to that. Where we're at with Phase Two right now is really having some opportunities to take advantage of some community events that we know we got a great cross-section of feedback from, particularly the Party in the Park and the summer events. To kick off our presence on Let's Talk Wilsonville, which we did last week, we will be posting a survey on there later this month that will run through September, and that will kind of coordinate with some of our outreach activities that we have planned for the Party in the Park event later this month. We also, because of that rent burden number and where it landed, we now are obligated to hold a public meeting on rent burden, which we are going to fold into this project and do that, we have to do it by the end of the year. We're going to do it, I think, in November, in concert with a Planning Commission meeting, to try to get, tease out more input from people that can inform the HNC-A work. Because there's the quantitative perspective, but there's also the unmet housing need that people experience, and we want to be able to that, to be sure that we're bringing that into the analysis as well. And so we'll be reaching out to community members, people who live here, people who might live here in the future, but we really want to focus on renter households and underrepresented community members, just to understand a lot of the policy choices for housing in that realm are where government strategies can have more of an influence. And so whether or not that's keeping somebody in rentership, or trying to provide them with a pathway to homeownership opportunities, those are important conversations to have. And so we're going to be trying to engage those populations as we move forward. And then the bulk of the work really happening in Phase Three, to refine that Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis, and then pivot into the Housing Production Strategy work. We will be putting together a project advisory committee. I think we'll be taking a similar approach to what we did for the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, since it is going to be a lot of policies and strategies to try to bring in some experts and have some conversations, you know, look at the policy direction we set for ourselves with the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, and how we can build on that, take stock of what has been working, what hasn't been working, and really continue to have some one-on-one interviews, housing conversations, and more dialogue with you all, as well as the DEI Committee and the Planning Commission. And, you know, hopefully, set us up to have a strategy that guides us moving forward with some actions. I think we've learned a lot since we adopted that plan back in 2020 about, you know, where we can have influence and how the financial resources we have, the tools we have, how we can best deploy those as a city. And so I think this document will be a really interesting opportunity to chart our course forward for the next several years. So with that, with the time we have remaining, any other questions or comments you have about the overall project or the engagement plan, any suggestions? I think we're open to hearing those now. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and there was a lot of information in the packet, and I think that was really helpful. I have a little concern about the composition of the project advisory committee, and it looks like, and I recognize that it is beneficial for us to have people on that advisory committee that are experts in the field and that will be able to bring some information to the table, but it leaves the public out. And the comment that says, "May extend invitations for additional optional attendees beyond those stakeholders, such as community members with unmet housing needs." I think there's a lot of information about housing that isn't necessarily going to come from people who have unmet need. I think there are people who have lived in this community for quite some time, who have moved and purchased housing here, who may also bring some information to the table. So I would like to see it not limited to our underrepresented communities or our rent-burdened communities only. I think a broader representation... I think a broader representation, and I think that that would, you know, just as we wanted to enlarge the pack for the airport to include all representative communities, it may be really good to think about what are the, what's the larger picture of represented communities in the city of Wilsonville as it relates to housing? That is beyond just those people who are, have unmet need at this point, but who may have some ability to see a larger picture of what housing looks like and can look like in our city. So I just have some concerns about it sounding like it was just optional, that additional people would be on, and that it was really going to be just the housing experts.
So just to clarify, you said we, it says here, "We may extend invitations for additional optional attendees." And my understanding, you want to put more effort into that than "may extend"?
Yeah. I think, I think we need to look at the universe of who is knowledgeable about housing in the city of Wilsonville, beyond developers or, you know, those folks. So, or just people who are underrepresented or have an unmet need, so.
Actually, you reminded me, Council Linville, of a discussion I had with somebody who was a developer for a long time, talking about not just Wilsonville, but communities like this, where there are these homes, some of them older, a lot of, most of them older, with a lot of bedrooms. And there are maybe two people living there, and there are five bedrooms. And is there six bedrooms? Is there a different use for that home? You know, is there a market for that 20 years, for, you know, the volume of houses that might be available for large families at a certain cost? I'm just curious if this housing needs analysis will look at the future of that kind of structure. You know, for example, could it be shared housing? Could it be today's version of a cooperative house? And so that may be, when I heard Council Linville talk about this, it might be talking to somebody who has that kind of a house, and they don't plan on remodeling it, is there a little market for it? What are some ideas for a future, you know, maybe the, it's just like, we're looking 20 and 30 years out. And so this particular developer was just telling me that as the baby boomers age out, you're not having this, as many people looking for five-bedroom houses as you did 50 years ago. But those houses are still out there.
And I'm thinking, in particular, seniors who are aging out of a family home.
Yep.
Who are not necessarily burdened, but they can't find something that meets their needs that is, that is single level, that is smaller, that is...
And they might free up their house for someone else if they found it.
That's right. And so I guess what I'm saying is, not all housing needs are related to unhoused homeless or unmet, persons experiencing unmet housing needs. So if we, if we close that down to that, we're going to miss, I think, the opportunity to listen to some of the other stories. So, and I think what, people living in Old Town have a very different story in terms of housing needs than do people who live in Villbois, who may have children. There are, you know, there are people in Charbonneau that have a very different kind of housing need than do people who live in Meadows or out in Frog Pond. So I think if we look at the whole universe of the community and say, what are the voices that need to be heard? I think that would be good for us.
We're all going to comment on similar topics, so. But, you know, when I was reading through the packet, I had highlighted, I was glad to see specific outreach for rent burden for, with our DEI Committee. And I think that, you know, many on council, you know, perhaps all on council have that view, that we're glad, because some of those voices haven't historically been represented in, you know, local government research, right? And so I think it's really important for us to be very intentional about including those stories and voices and needs in this work. In the margin of my packet, I highlighted this, and I wrote, "Yes, and..." dot, 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 right? And the "and," I think, is some of what maybe Council Linville is talking about. I had jotted, what about CCC, or Placamas Community College? What about OIT? Trying to get some of the student perspectives that are coming into the city, what do they need? Or perhaps with some of our larger employers in Wilsonville, what are early career needs for people that are trying to establish themselves, perhaps at a company in Wilsonville? And that will serve our large employers, too, if people are able to stay living in the city, or find places in the city, and it becomes a good draw for that healthy workforce that those companies want to have. Are there conversations that we could have with some of those segments of the population? Probably in a different, you know, it's a different focus group, it's a different event, or whatever, but include those. And then also, I was thinking about seniors, and this probably goes into our, or different age group, to our earlier conversation about, can we see this income split out by different ages, or something like that, too? To better understand how needs change over time, or mobility concerns, too, if there's a segment of the population that has different mobility needs? How can we get some of that storyline and information woven into this? I wondered, like, could it be as simple as having a survey, or a flyer, or a hotline, or a some, I don't know, something that goes with our Meals on Wheels? When the meals are delivered? Here, can you please tell us about your housing needs, too? Because that might be a segment of the population in Wilsonville that we also may or may not hear from in general channels. So, of course, we just, we all want lots of feedback. But at the end of the day, when we're trying to decide what is the housing type and the needs, and the, not just the square footage and the price take, but like, you know, what type of housing, what layout, like the single level, like the proximity to different amenities, or something like that? The more we understand about these different storylines, the better decisions we'll make in that, with those regards, too.
And it's probably being planned, but I'm thinking of a segment we have in the Equitable Strategic Housing Plan, Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, sorry. And that is about home ownership. And Council Barry arranged for us to have a meeting with somebody in this housing field. And we just heard a little bit in answer to a question about some kind of a cooperative or a way that you could become, I'm not going to describe it right, but like co-op home ownership. So there's a way for somebody to get into home ownership at a lower entry point. And, you know, it could be like a land trust model, or various tools. And I'd like to find out more about that, because as we know, that is one way to protect from the increasing rents. And because most rental housing is owned by out-of-state corporations, we're not really having, you know, they're not like your old friend from high school who lives down the street and rents out a house and wants to keep it reasonable. They're big corporations, and we're not in conversations with them, and I understand they have business results to achieve. But as time goes on, I still worry about, as the economy changes, a smaller and smaller and smaller segment of the population who has an opportunity to get some level of equity in their housing. And so if they could, I hope that'll be part of what they look at again.
Yeah, certainly, that's, the DLCD has a whole kind of matrix of different strategies that, we don't have to stick purely to that matrix, but those types of programs are ideas that are on that matrix for potential strategies. And I think we have a little bit about an exploration of that in the Equitable Strategic Plan.
We do, yeah.
We just haven't had the capacity or ability to, I think, you know, we've asked questions, we've done it tangentially as part of other work, but we haven't yet got to a point where we've explored that.
And we have explored excise tax and different ways of addressing that. But anyway, go ahead.
I just have one more question, and that is, I wonder if, in the scope of this project, that there would be some discussion about, or will there be some discussion about, do we, is it advisable for Wilsonville to continue as one of the Portland, to be at the highest, with the highest rental rate of all of the cities in the metro, in the Portland metro area? Is that where we want to be? Or do we want to move that number? So we end up someplace else instead of with the highest housing rental rate of all of the cities in the...
Who's saying, like, you need to say? Talking about rent?
No, I'm not talking about money.
The split between...
I'm talking, number of people that rent versus own ownership. And I know that that's, I don't know exactly, I don't know how it's changed.
I think it's presented, yeah.
Whether it's percentage, or if it's actual number, or how those, how the cities are ranked.
Yeah, they should be able to pull that, that data. I know they have some comparison cities that they're looking at as part of this work to see where we fall, so that's certainly is at a point that they'll have.
I think the one I recall seeing, and it may actually be in the Equitable Strategic, Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, is not just representative cities. I think it's, well, it is, it isn't all of that, but I think it's pretty, it's a pretty wide swath. Well, thank you, Kim. Appreciate your time on this. And this was a good conversation, but everybody dove into it so much. That brings us to our last presentation for tonight, Frog Pond East and South Master Plan Development Code.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to be with you. Dan Polly, Planning Manager. Let me start my presentation here. It is on the screen here. So this project moves forward as we continue to work on the details of implementing, which has been pretty exciting. You know, sometimes it doesn't move as fast as we necessarily expect or want, but that's, it also provides an opportunity where we're doing something interesting and doing things a little differently than we have in the past. So taking time where we can to test it and make sure we get it right is really important, too. So that's what we're working through with Frog Pond East and South right now. And so I wanted to, though, share with you tonight a few updates and get your feedback. Again, these concepts I'll share tonight have all been presented and discussed with the Planning Commission, and in the form they're presented are as, kind of got thumbs up during work sessions from the Planning Commission. So appreciate their hard work and their input as we've worked through these details of So one new concept we're using out here, essentially, there is, everything's zoned, all the residential areas are zoned for every residential use. It's really differentiated by urban form. And so we haven't done that in this manner before, so adding some more precise definitions of exactly what that means as we implement it is one step that we're taking. So making sure we have the clarity we need. And so there's three of these definitions that we're proposing to add to the code. First of all, what is urban form for this context? What is an urban form type? And what is an urban form type designation? So urban form is really the bulk, the placement, the spacing of buildings, things setbacks, width of buildings, and other site improvements that really have a big impact on the look and feel of a development. And then the type is, we have three types in Frog Pond East and South, with Type One having the most urban look and feel, where buildings tend to be closer to the street, closer together, larger bulk. And Type Three having the less, least urban look and feel, where you have buildings further apart, further setback, things like that. And then the designation is actually the map designation on, that is in the Frog Pond East and South Master Plan, but also will be brought into the development code. So let me show that to you before, or as review, if you will, from what the council adopted back in December. So we have the Type One, which is the brown color, which townhouses, a mix of everything, but probably townhouses and multifamily in there. Again, we talked about having parking available and the BPA easement and things like that, and having it more central interior rather than pushed towards the edge on Stafford Road, and having the Stafford Road edge more kind of mirroring what's on the other side of Stafford Road and Frog Pond West. Then also the desire, as the council talked about, of having a node for opportunities down in the south part of the neighborhood, too. Then get to the golden rod color, which is the middle of the road, the Type Two, urban form, to get a variety, and then the Type Three urban form. So I'll pause there. Any questions about urban form? Is this coming back from our prior Frog Pond East and South discussions?
Excuse me, just no, ask a question? Just again, even though they're designated on here, they will be mixed.
Yeah, so it's, the urban form will work, the designers will work together, but there's a mix of housing in each of these?
Yes, okay.
Any questions on that part? Okay. Of course, we can come back as needed. So one question, then, that we'll move to is the design standards for housing. We're talking, we've previously talked fairly about design standards for multifamily housing, as well as design standards for the Brisbane Main Street. But this is for the design standards for everything else, for the detached homes, for the middle housing, for the cottages. And what design standards are we using? So, and really, we have questions. I mean, we've done a lot of design standards in our history. I mean, think back, I mean, our first, we've done some historically, but then there was Villbois, where, as you know, there was a lot of design standards for Villbois. And then we kind of took what we learned from Villbois, what we liked, simplified it down, and got our design standards for Frog Pond West. So it's an iterative process. Now we're at a decision point of, what of these Frog Pond West standards makes sense for East and South? Versus, also, recently, we adopted citywide design standards as part of the middle housing in Wilsonville project, where those were, so stepping back there, is we adopted standards that also applied to detached homes, because we need to apply the same standards to middle housing as detached homes. So now Wilsonville has design standards for any type of housing, for particularly detached homes and middle housing. So then, question becomes, what of those standards from Frog Pond West do we want to use versus which of... to use versus which of those citywide standards that we adopted with the middle housing project makes most sense to use in East and South? And we want to be clear about that, so when developers come in, they're not guessing. So discussing this as a project team and then with the Planning Commission, there's, it's kind of, in summary, we cherry picked a few from Frog Pond West that really seemed to make sense, have worked well, that have a lot of impact from a design standpoint, but don't add a lot of expense. And then otherwise, apply the citywide standards, which have been well-vetted to cover all types of housing, also apply in all situations, and really target it to those things that have a lot of impact, but minimal, but minimize impacts on housing expense. So Frog Pond West, we have main entrance standards about for all housing types to face the street, things like that. We have standards about the garage facing not more than 50% of the garage being on the frontage. We have some prohibited materials that continue to make sense, some specific things about fences, especially as it relates to some of the designs and how they interact with the walls along the main roads, as well as relationship to schools and parks that, you know, you don't want your backyard kind of, just a fence in a backyard against schools and parks. So those are all concepts that we feel have worked well in West, and we want to move forward. West has a little bit different facade variety than what was adopted for middle housing. We fulfill the facade variety standards, which means how much you need to vary the house next to it, so you don't have this same color design of a house down the whole street, but you get variety. We talked a lot about that with middle housing, and those standards seem to really make sense to be the ones to carry forward in East and South. Articulation is an important one. We found that as part of the middle housing project to be really had a good place to go, as we looked at a lot of housing and examples of what makes middle housing look more compatible or like detached homes. So as you have mixed types of housing, that they work well together architecturally, so that articulation, and how often you have articulation and different architectural elements is a good concept we felt to move forward. And then there are, as allowed under state rules and under the state model code for middle housing, there are some middle housing-specific standards that we felt wise and for consistency and simplicity also to carry forward. Those are around window coverage and how, and some driveway and parking area standards of, you know, how a parking lot for a cottage cluster is oriented and put in there, and those all made sense to carry forward as well. So before moving on, I'll pause there and answer any questions and get your guidance if this is, this is the way that you would want us to continue to develop these code standards that will guide development of many, many homes over the next couple decades.
Go ahead. I have a question. As I went through the document, there is this, it's almost like a watermark commentary that goes all the way through, and it was difficult for me, as I looked at it, to see, okay, it's, this language is left in because it remains applicable, however, everything is in subsection B that's different. So, and it says that it's proposed that these standards don't apply, so even though they're written here, they're not applicable. Is that correct?
So you're talking in section 4.113, I believe.
I'm talking about the residential design standards.
Yeah. Those are just, that language, what has been carefully crafted, because there are areas both in Vilbois and Frog Pond where there are standards that contradict or override the general standards, so we want to be clear about which standards apply where. And in the end, when you're an actual developer coming in, we have worksheets that guide you to which standards apply as well.
It's just hard, as you look at it, to say, oh, okay, if it talks about columns and brick walls, does this apply or does it not apply?
So it ends up in that, it's fairly small what doesn't apply.
Okay.
But we just want to be very specific to that so that there's not any question.
And then, are we expecting that front yards would be on Stafford Road?
There would be, that was something that was desired and discussed at the Planning Commission, that there would be, if not the front yard, an active face to Stafford. That was a desire. And note that that will end up being set back quite a bit from like the travel lane, because you'll have, you'll have the 12-foot, I believe it is, bike ped path, and then you'll have further landscape before you actually get to the lot. So it's not like they're right up against, but the desire to make it, because you're going to have the roundabouts that are slowing down the speed, to make it more of a comfortable residential street than everything having its back to it. So that was a specific desire expressed during the master planning.
So, but does, is that mirrored on the other side on West?
Not so much. There's actually, ends up being a variety on West. There's a lot on the side, there's the church on the corner, so no, there's no houses that take direct access, front, you know, that have their front door on Stafford. But when we, and we'll get to the wall design, is it's not the desire to have the exact same treatment on the West, but to speak the same language, where you have the same kind of brick element, so they go together, but there was a specific desire not to do the back walls, the backyards to Stafford. And that was discussed during the master plan.
So I have a question. I mean, there's a lot of information, and I'm not going to say I can take it all in in this half hour. But because Frog Pond East and South are so much, there's, you know, very different from Frog Pond West, very different, because we have so much variety. And so I, I don't know if you can, if you can answer this, but I have this concern, or see if this seems like a valid concern, that if we try to take what we have in West and apply it to South and East, we might shortchange those designs, because they won't have the same size of yard. I mean, so, you know, they won't have other options to enjoy in their own house and yard. And it might look like, I mean, this idea of coming along by, you know, Stafford and seeing the fronts of houses, I see that has appeal because it looks like a neighborhood, but if that's a variety of housing facing out there, small houses, townhomes, detached, well, you know, are they, I'm not sure that I can see that that same logic applies to a far different format. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm following you. And so one thing is that, so as West has built out, we, there's tended, in a number of locations, you do have the larger two-unit townhouse or duplex.
Right.
Right there, there's a two-story bulkier building. And so that really lends itself to having from, and that's really what is the urban form to, what is designated along the Stafford frontage, to mirror that. So from an arc, from kind of a building bulk standpoint, we feel that we're going to meet that. So we're, but we're competing with two things, and this was discussed quite a bit during the master planning, especially with Planning Commission, is you also have the Brisbane Main Street, which you end up with those fairly tall buildings there, you know, three or four-story buildings. So you want to both be mindful of kind of blending out that density that's right on the main street along Stafford, while still mirroring what's across. So you may have some three-story immediately adjacent, just north or south of Brisbane, but then it goes down to two-story along the rest of it, which would be a mixture of all housing types, but have a bulk similar to what you'd see for those two-unit homes on the other side of Stafford, as well as the church there that is a larger, bulkier building, which we anticipate to be there for quite a while.
I just can't see people stopping in the traffic to turn into their driveway.
No, there's not driveway access.
There's no driveway access.
Right. So, yeah, there wouldn't be, it's, I mean, being arterial, there is limited access. So you're only going to have access at Brisbane and Frog Pond and Colley. So similar to Advance, a home facing Advance won't have, which is similar treatment that you see even along Willow Creek Drive today, that it's, would be either a drive, a parking lot, maybe if it's multifamily, or an alley in the back that would have this space for parking. So yeah, your pedestrian orientation is towards Stafford, but there's not vehicle access from Stafford.
I kind of got the sense from looking at this, and maybe this is not what we're doing in looking at the design standards, but it looked like that all the garages had to be in facing out and set back. So, and so that's, I didn't, I guess I didn't read it correctly.
So there's multiple options. So if you're a front-loaded garage, and this, this is standards that exist both in Frog Pond West and elsewhere in the city, including Vilbois, is that when you have a front-loaded, first of all, there's a limit to the amount of the...
Frontage.
Frontage it can take up, but also there's a requirement that the setback, that it's setback, that the garage setback is further than the otherwise building setback. And that's for a couple of reasons, to diminish the visual impact of the garage, but also there's a practical reason that you want to have a deep enough driveway, right? So have a standard-sized parking spot while still allowing the rest of the house, like the front room or, you know, right room or whatever it is, to be closer to the sidewalk.
Okay, all right. Well, then I just wasn't looking at it in terms of other options.
And it really depends on the urban form, right? When you start getting a narrow enough lot, you're going to tend to get alley-loaded from a practical standpoint.
You are going to talk about the brick wall?
Yes. We will, go ahead.
I have a question about the main entrance standards. And this is on page 143 of our packet. In that gray text, the commentary text, at the end of it, it says, "The exception is C," and then I see that C has the strike-through on it. It says regarding the height of front door, which has not been used and could preclude brownstone-style townhouses. So then when I went down to look at C, it's talking about the distance from grade. So are we talking about like the number of steps essentially up to the front door?
Right.
Right? And so I was curious why this was originally included, and then maybe you could explain that? And then also, to give you a little context where my mind or head was when I was thinking about this, is I'm wondering if we, I mean, I like, I like the variety of houses, and so I like having some brownstone-style townhouses. I think that's great. But if we have a lot of them, also, it occurs to me that the brownstone-style townhouses may not be as accessible for people if there's a lot of steps going up to that house. And so how do we make sure that we will have this mix? We want, we want, you know, many of the houses to be accessible, so how do we ensure that we have a mix? Is that just because of all those other encouraging mix of design and mix of housing type that we've woven into the plan? Or has there been discussion about that? Or is there a way to retrofit brownstone-style houses so that it is more accessible? Or what can you tell me about all of those concerns?
Great question. So first of all, this is, I'd have to ask the drafters of the original Frog Pond code. My understanding is that it was, you know, when that code was written, it was imagining, I mean, what we have in Frog Pond West. It's primarily detached homes, a few duplexes. And so it wasn't really, and just to have that design consistency, not having some weird grade and avoiding, they just saw that as a potential kind of weirdness that might get introduced into the design with some grades, so they chose to put it in there. It's never become an issue. So that's as much as I know of why it was in there. So to the, so to a couple of your points, so first of all, to the accessibility point, so there's a couple of things there. First of all, kind of separate from these standards, we still do have, as drafted, a requirement of 10% of units to be, the current terminology we use is mobility-ready. So essentially, that are accessible without stairs. And as drafted, a portion of those would need to be full access, full mobility-ready, which meaning there's no stairs, and then a portion could, but then another portion could be partial, which we mean by partial is essentially master on main, that you have everything you need on the main, but then you also have, you also may have upstairs bedrooms and things like that, that, the other specifically to this brownstone idea and having what that allows, because we're allowing ADUs, and that's a concept that's been introduced and used elsewhere, and is a concept even the developers have talked to us about, is having a ground-floor ADU that may be an accessible unit, and then having the two stories above it, which would be a separate, separate unit. So you could have, you know, ground floor, no stairs to get into the ground-floor ADU, and then have the brownstone stairs going up to the second level for that entry.
So even, like we, even with the brownstones or code that would support that housing type, we could get above our 10% if that sort of product is...
Yeah.
Comes to fruition or whatever. How did we arrive at the 10%? Like as a 10% as the figure? Is that...
So I'll have to look back at my detailed notes. I know we referenced, you know, kind of ADA, you know, percentage of ADA spaces was kind of used for other similar standards. And then from there, went to kind of a nice round number, so. So it's trying to, making it enough to be meaningful, but not so much to make it a detriment to the overall development.
Right, because I know if we, if we limit it too much, then that's going to make everything more expensive, too, right? And then that's another barrier.
Yeah, that's why we found it really wise, and we'll be back with work session more specifically on these variety standards here in the coming months. But one specific thing, that while we introduced, while we want, you know, the ground-floor cottages and have that opportunity to have the single-floor cottages, you know, land is at a premium, so also encouraging the master at main at the same time, because that can provide another option.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thanks for kind of explaining some of that.
Certainly.
We hear, we're here about chunks of funding that may be available or is being made available at different points from the state legislature for housing implementation. Have you ever heard of an idea where a builder could, let's say, somebody's building 20-row houses, and if they're going to put in a certain number of accessible units, they get some kind of an incentive or subsidy for that to equalize the, you know, level of playing field?
I'm not familiar with a specific program for that, but we can, I'll make a note to...
We'll ask someone to introduce.
But we'll certainly, we're going to want to look at all sorts of options as we work at this housing.
It is, it is, that's a really good factor that, or idea, that...
It is, it is, that's a really good factor that, or idea, that there are barriers to this, these things that can make it harder to, it can raise the, the floor of housing across the board for an unintended consequence. And then, another question, this, is, is the way we do landscaping included in this plan? Because I know in Vilbo, in some areas where we have a certain townhome configuration, there are not as many trees as you see other places. And so shade is less, and it actually is a hotter environment often. And it's just like, it's got sidewalks and courtyard around it. And so unless you put in some big pot or something, you wouldn't be able to have much shade. Is that considered here or is it too?
Certainly, there's a couple of ways that happens. I mean, you're going to have more infrastructure as you put in more.
Density.
More density. But at the same time, I mean, there's kind of, there, there's a threshold that when you start getting more alley-loaded, right, there's more, you actually are removing the driveway cuts.
Right.
Which provides more opportunity for trees. But then when you get skinnier, then, when you get to a certain point, you have so many sewer lines and water, water, water mains and things that the, the spacing from those becomes difficult. As we'll be coming forward, we're also working on refining and being more clear and objective of our stormwater standards and how we, where, and how we prioritize street trees over stormwater as well. So you'll have that conversation to look forward to here in the coming months as well. So, now there's a lot of detail of this, but yeah, these are things that, because there's a lot of demand on, on that landscape area.
That makes a lot of sense. And perhaps there's a way to do a gigantic potted tree. I don't know. Okay. Other comments and questions?
Well, I think the tree standards are really important, especially with climate change and appearance. I mean, it just, when you have a softer landscape, it, I think it, it adds to the beauty and the enjoyment of a residential area.
So we will certainly make sure that as we look at these design standards, that we're providing plenty of opportunities to be trees to be planted.
Equity for shade. I mean, these could all be, it's just, you can go from one block to the next and have a different temperature.
Right tree, right place, so it does also mature and provide that shade, so.
I, I was looking for the parking standards. Where is that?
So the parking standards are not part of this.
Okay.
This is also due proximity to transit. It would be within that area affected by the climate-friendly and equitable communities because it is on Route 4, within a quarter mile of Route 4. So there would be no minimum parking standards out here under the state rules.
That's what I thought, but I didn't see it written down in this.
But outside of that, it's, we're really not, it'd be the one, one space per unit as would be the rest of the city. But those are, but it's zero based on the climate-friendly, equitable communities. So using some verbiage from Vilbo design addresses, area kind of streets that need, that have special design considerations, we'll go through this fairly quickly. We started talking about it is how do we, how do we address kind of the specific design of Frog Pond East and South while carrying forward some of that design language and design precedent of West? So the, because the whole idea is Frog Pond, right? We're not going to top, think about West, South and East in the long run, right? It's all Frog Pond. So we talked about direction for both Stafford and Advance. Road from the master plan is to have the pedestrian orientation that is complementary to the design of Frog Pond West. So need, have been needed to think through specifically what that might look like. So for Stafford Road is to carry forward that four-foot brick wall that you see in West. And all the structures, even if it ends up being a rear, a rear, like maybe it's a multifamily building that has the rear facing Stafford, you still need an enhanced entrance, like a pedestrian entrance facing Stafford. And those courtyard fences for, using that material and same material and cap, you don't necessarily have the wrought iron on top of them, so that's the difference. And, and as mentioned, we have that height transition from Brisbane Main Street. And then where you have those entrances, those pedestrian connections you have an access, if you want to put a gate, maybe if it's a detached home or a townhouse where you want to have a gate, then that uses that black iron look that is also mirrors what you see in Frog Pond West. On Advance, Advance, you do have houses facing again directly on it. It's more of a look of Willow Creek. If you drive down Willow Creek today, we have the Planted Median with houses right on that. And this is from Vilbo, but that short courtyard fence with the pillars with that wrought iron that matches Frog Pond West. So again, a different treatment, having, you don't want as much as a wall along Advance, but keeping that same look and feel. So that is what we're looking at for the addresses. And so happy to answer any questions or take any additional comments on that or anything else we discussed.
I have another question about fences. We talked earlier, several months ago about, and I have two fence questions.
Okay.
One is about not, you know, when we have a limited distance, a narrower spacing between two houses. How do you think about not wasting that space by having it be a fenced-in, really skinny corridor, fenced into this house and the house next door with a dividing fence in between? Or making it a passageway with what we see also native plantings that are kind of easy to maintain. And they're part of the HOA, and it doesn't create just a weird, a weird area that nobody wants to maintain. You can't get in there. So what are, how is that reflected in this?
So those will be part of the overall design standards table, which we're refining.
Okay.
We discussed briefly with you back, I believe it was in February.
Okay, yeah.
But certainly, we haven't lost sight of that one.
And then, okay, great. And then separately, another thought about fences is I notice as, you know, as you'd expect as developments like Vilbo and probably the same with, with Charbonneau years back, but as it develops over the years, you see different styles of fences. And there's a style of fence that came in fairly recently that I've seen some people then, they probably have gotten permission, taking it out, replacing it with wrought iron. And so the, the builder must have had, you know, a certain level of flexibility as to, to what type of wooden fence or wrought iron around the front yard you could use.
And I believe I know the fences you're talking about. I don't like them either.
And I just wondered, how do we, I don't want to disparage anyone's fence, so I'm not getting very specific, but, but how do you start from the beginning and avoid that much variation? You know, I like variation, but that's pretty big variation.
So specific to the courtyard fence.
Courtyard fence.
Yeah. So for Vilbo, there was a, there was a menu in the pattern book that listed, like, I believe it was three or four different designs.
Right.
That were, that were acceptable. And the one that we've seen more recently was in that original.
It technically is in there.
It's in there from, from, you know, back in the early 2000s.
Okay.
Just hasn't been used. And when they started putting it in, it's like, okay, it is in there. So it, and here, for where we specifically require courtyard here along Advance, it's all meant to be uniform, one option.
Those are all my questions. Any other comments or questions? Okay. This was a lot of dense material.
Sometimes I bring that to you, don't I?
Yes, and thank you.
Yes. So this is where we're getting into the details of implementation and so, yeah, it does get a little dense.
But you're still smiling.
That's right. I've been on vacation. I drove in about just after five today, so.
Well, thanks very much, and I appreciate your taking all of these questions, and we'll keep each other posted. So with that, I think our work session is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.